So it is 6:46 and welcome to the June 14th Board of Education meeting. We'll call the meeting to order and welcome to our Zoom meeting. And Zoom allows for greater flexibility in conducting our Board of Education meeting without violating any piece of the current MDHHS order. For some of our community, it also gives a greater chance for them to participate. Board of Education meetings are designed to conduct the business of the district. Public comment is a formal process to address the Board of Education during a scheduled meeting. The Board of Education members regularly update themselves with personal research, personal experience, community correspondence, and personal conversations out in the community. The policies of the Board of Education are designed for process and decorum, always including input from our community. Thank you for joining us in the Zoom format this evening to observe or participate during public comment. An email is also always available to share your thoughts. So with that, let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you are ready with the flag, Mr. Smith. Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and that brings us to our roll call. Secretary Slager from the House vote, and we have noted that Mr. Rivard is an excused absence for this evening.
Okay, Trustee Bowser?
Here.
Trustee Rivard, absent. Trustee Vanderhyde?
Here.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Here.
Vice President Schaffner?
Here.
President Reed?
Here.
Secretary Slager, here.
Okay, thank you. And we will move on to the adoption of the agenda, and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Is there any discussion? Having none, I'll call the roll. Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde?
Yes.
And Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
And President Reed? Yes. The agenda is adopted as presented, and that brings us to gratitudes. Is there anybody that would like to start and share?
I'm grateful for the end of the school year and just things winding down. I know it was a pretty crazy year in a lot of ways and new challenges, but just really thankful for the administration and teachers and students, parents, just sticking with it to the end and yeah, just thankful for a strong ending.
And at the celebration, the cookies and the ice cream I heard were a big hit. And the cookie ended up on one of my counters, so they were very good. Anyone else?
Man, sure. I am very grateful for just the high school staff, administration, and the way the graduation went with the community. I mean, that was just wonderful to see so many people out celebrating the graduation of their children. And it just was very exciting. Really appreciated Mr. Painter's commencement speech there that was awesome. And just, yeah, that was a great day and really exciting to be a part of it.
Agree. It's wonderful to see full stadium seats.
I'm very thankful for the progress that's being made, both on the projects at the middle school and the project at Cedar Trails. So at this point, it's very early, but both projects are ahead of schedule, which is really exciting. The teams are doing an outstanding job and we're excited to see further progress over the next few months.
Okay, all right. Thank you, everyone, for sharing. We will move on to our consent items. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
All right.
I'll call the roll. Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde?
Yes.
Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed? Yes, the consent items are approved as presented. At this time, we are going to be moving into closed session, so I would entertain a motion to move into closed session pursuant to open meetings at 8C for contract negotiations.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde? Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed? Yes, we will move into closed session. So we will mute our mics and we will move to our other link for that meeting.
Individuals that are here as attendees, we will be back momentarily.
All right, we are rolling back into open session at 7:18. So if we can let the minutes show that, please. And we'll move forward with our first discussion item, the budget hearing for the all final 2021 and initial 2122 budget information with Chris Lahey presenting.
All right, thank you. In Board Book, still have the general fund year-to-date and the bond construction fund year-to-date. That won't go over them, but they are there for your review and we'll get into our budgets. So share my screen here. Went with a new theme this year, the the Composition Notebook. Something that I borrowed from online. But so final budgets from the 2021 school year, very exciting. It's been a heck of a year and the budget will show that. So first things first, we'll talk about our revenue streams. There's two major components of the revenue the district sees each year. First one is enrollment, and you can see that our actual enrollment took quite a dip this year. Obviously, we've spoken about that, so I won't belabor it. But a couple hundred students down from pre-COVID a year ago, or I guess it's going on for more than a year ago. But because of the state's super blend, we were able to claim membership for 3,538 students and really not feel much of that impact for this school year. So very nice. The foundation allowance maintained the same. If you remember, a year ago, I came to the board and said, man, it looks like from the School Aid Fund, we're going to see a large decline in pure per pupil revenue, excuse me. And we did see a proration for last school year that took place in August that we had to book back. But then for this school year, we maintained the same foundation allowance of $8,111 per student. So that was very nice. We did see a $65 per student one-time appropriation. That's not reflected here because it was not added to the foundation allowance. So that takes us to our overall revenue picture for the year. And I put on the screen here the initial budget where we started a year ago, the amendment that I brought to you in January, and then our 2021 final budget that you see here in the third column. And so what I'm going to focus on for this final budget presentation is really what's changed since the January amendment. So we're really just going to be looking at this column here and the final column here. Because once again, with the initial budget a year ago, it was anyone's guess what we were going to be looking at. So you see there's quite a stark difference. Comparing to the January amendment, there's really not a big difference. Only $364,000 on a $41 million, almost a $42 million budget for the general fund. So really extremely close, you know, less than a percentage. The changes, real briefly, I'm not going to take a whole lot of time on this. We did see a little bit more local revenue, just based upon things like fuel reimbursements and some small rentals of school facilities that I didn't anticipate any back in January. State revenue, we received some special one-time funds. You can see there was an increase there of about $100,000. There was a federal revenue increase of $286,000 from the amendment. Most of that was because of something that we didn't know anything about in January, and that was the summer school credit recovery program that the state of Michigan has flowed through from the federal government that'll be taking place, actually started today. And then some additional COVID funding. And then slight decrease in transfers out. Most of that is because the ISD supplies us with Act 18 revenue, that's a special ed revenue. And they decided, we decided as a group to base that on actual enrollment versus that super blended enrollment. So you saw how our actual enrollment took a hit. That flowed through and we saw a little bit less than $117,000, less than what I anticipated in January. And that decision was made mid-year. So really not a big change. You can see it here in pie graph form. If we put these together, January amendment on the left, final budget on the right, they look pretty identical. I mean, you can see that the state is right around 76%. I won't belabor that anymore, but really the January amendment for revenues was pretty spot on to where it looks like we're going to finish. So we'll flip to expense. There's a few slides to this, so I'll just continue to blow on through it and then take questions at the end of the general fund before we get into the other funds. So for our general fund expenses, you can see here focusing on two same columns, our amendment there down the middle, and then the final budget here. I'm coming to you with a decrease in expenditures of $717,000. And I'll go through the reasons as to why that is, and they are a little bit complicated. For basic programs, and this is, and I put next to it here, you can see the percentage of the budget, 47.36% of our overall expenditure budget is basic programs. And then just a really brief explanation of what that means. It's teachers and classrooms. If it's right there in front of our students, that's a basic program. And it represents this large red part of the pie chart. So there's quite a bit that's changed here. You can see we've increased by $125,000 from the January amendment. If you put that on the scope of 19 million, it's not that big of a change. But it's worth noting that all of these things took place. So there was ups, there were downs, but we, that's the ebbs and flows, especially in a year like COVID. So again, you see that summer school credit recovery really impacted basic programs because that's instruction of students. The $150 social studies curriculum purchase, you see that reflected here as an increase. And actually, that will be something that will need to change prior to the next board meeting because I just found out on Friday that that's not going to hit us until next fiscal year. So I'll have to pull that out. Because with accounting, we have to recognize, we have to have that in the district physically in order to count it, it won't be. And then there were some ebbs and flows of the different buildings. I put it in here. I won't go through it unless anybody has specific questions. But you can see where wages, benefits, substitute costs, supplies, Cedar Trails and Beach, they were down. Cedar View and Middle School, they were up slightly. And then Red Hawk and the high school, they were down. And there was just a multitude of reasons for all that. We had some resignations mid-year. We had a retirement mid-year. So certainly, you know, supply budgets weren't always spent. Overall, slight increase, but nothing really to, a material change, as they would say. Next, added needs, just about $100,000 increase, brought it up to 5.7 million. That's this next biggest pie chart here. The biggest increase for this part was regional special education programs, and that was primarily because of virtual special education programs. We sent some students to Rockford. And because we kept the foundation allowance for those students, we're going to pay that to Rockford in addition to the added cost that we typically would for the regional programs. And you can see there was some other changes for special ed staff. This is our special ed staff and interventionists. So again, not a large change. People support, this is our counselors, occupational therapists, psychologists, social workers, any non-instructional staff. You can see there's an increase here. This was primarily due to extra time for those itinerant spending time with students. We did have maternity leave and we paid our own staff to kind of fill in that burden while we were still paying staff member that was out. So slight change there as well, still 6.71% of the budget. Instructional staff services, this is the professional development, student services, academic services, Jen Haberlin's and Stacy Bosco's departments. We actually decreased by about $60,000 here. And most of that was because we moved some instructional software to different funds, or I'm, excuse me, to different functions versus the January amendment. So really pretty flat there. General administration, again, down 20,000, nothing worth noting. That's just small changes due to unspent budget and days worked of administrators. Very small part of the pie. School administration, very much the same. This is our principals and secretaries, $45,000 on the 2.2 million, very small, slightly over budget due to the COVID uncertainty, so we brought that down. Business services, we were down by about 31,000. 10,000 of that was because we brought in ACA, that's the Affordable Care Act reporting. We brought that in ourselves, something that Matt Andrews handled in payroll with a little help from myself, and we realized the savings there. So that was a bonus. Operations and maintenance, you can see there was a slight increase in wages and benefits, but we really underspent the budget. Water, phone, water and sewer, we made some adjustments with AT&amp;T. So we came in far under budget on that. And repairs and maintenance really, really were lower. Electricity costs were down by about 38,000, and then supplies and materials just weren't going to be the budget. So about $287,000 in savings there. Transportation, this was a big one, about a half million dollars under budget. I had left that in the January amendment, but we had a lot of closure credits from D, just because school was closed for some of that time in December, and we just didn't have as many kids riding the bus. The bus routes were lower, and so they gave us closure credits for that. And then we saved obviously in fuel costs. And then you can see $200,000 in regional special ed transportation. That really follows the same line with kids doing virtual learning. We didn't have, we didn't have as much expense there. So some nice savings in transportation. Central support services, and I apologize, my pie chart, this is again a small part of our budget, but I apologize, it covers the explanation there. We saved a little bit of money, believe it or not, Matt Blood and HR, about $20,000. And then technology services, we had budgeted, but because we had so many COVID-type technology expenses, we were able to bring that budget down. So it's about $40,000 savings there. And then athletics, about a $60,000 savings from our January budget. And this was primarily due to equipment and supplies. John Norton really kind of shored up and only spent what he needed through conversations that we had just due to the uncertainties. So we saw some savings in athletics. And then there, I believe there was only one sport that didn't run, and that was JV tennis in the spring. So there was a little bit of savings there for wages and benefits. And that is it for all those expense. But I also wanted to, I also wanted to point out our COVID funds, and you'll see this in the initial budget as well. So $1,779,524 of COVID-related funding flowed through the district this year. And I kind of laid it out in all the different buckets. So there was S R 1, that was the CARES Act. I won't read through everything that we spent these federal dollars on. We also received some money from Kent County, some money from the state. That's that COVID cost, 1032 funding, about 43,000. We received some MyConnect grants that we applied to or applied for for our online curriculum and some new student devices. We got rebates back on some of those Chromebooks. And then there was a large bucket from the state, these Corona Relief Funds, which is about 1.2 million. So you can see where, this is the slide. I remember from one of our parent forums that someone asked the question of, made the statement that the district hasn't done, hasn't prepared anymore than we did in April of 2020. And this slide really embodies all of the, at least purchases that we made and some of the PD and things that we did this year to help support. When you look at all the new devices and providing internet, we had 300 hotspots out to our students and all the neat things that were done. And it's really just the beginning, and you'll see that in the next budget because there's a really, really cool stream of funding coming through the next three years that's going to allow us to really catch these students up. And then lastly, you know, I like the pie charts. I don't know why my labels didn't come through on that one. Let me back up. But this shows the pie chart. I can see the benefits now, but I can't see the salaries. I believe the salaries up there is about 40%. And the only reason I put this on here is you really want your district expenses to be no more than 75, absolutely no more than about 76, 77% in salaries and benefits because those are your fixed people costs. So we're very, very comfortable there, just around 70%. And the rest is all in kind of those supplies and maintenance and capital outlay. So not sure why some of my labels didn't come through. I'll take a breather. There's a lot more to come. But any questions that anyone has on the revenue or the expense side for the 2021 school year for the general fund? And if not, that's fine, too. You can ask them later. All right, I'm going to keep moving. So real quickly, the fund balance, this is the, this is the thing that a lot of people want to know. It's reported, and you see comparables around the county. This budget puts Cedar Springs Public Schools with a general fund balance of 25.66% of expenditures. So it's going to have us finishing the school year with a fund balance in excess of $10 million, which is extremely healthy and allows us to do some really great things moving out of this COVID pandemic. And I'll fill in just a little bit of that coming up. There's my question slide. I got ahead of myself, but pretty neat little colored pencil slide there. And then this is a little roadmap that shows all the different funds. So the general fund is just the start. We have 12 different funds and it's soon to be 14 because of the new funds related to the school bonds. But it's, you know, how much money flows through this office and through this district? It's in excess of $85 million when you add all of the funds together. 41 of that being the general fund and then everything else in consideration, $85 million. Pretty neat. I won't spend nearly as much time on the others. If you recall, we just have these other small funds. The first one is the Community Services Fund. This is Campus Kids. This is our tuition preschool. We took a significant hit this year. COVID took a big toll on the Community Services Fund. I'm not, there's no way to sugarcoat that. Our staffing expenses were about $90,000 less, but our tuition was significant less. Our tuition revenue decreased by $205,000. The good news was, we had a very robust fund balance in this fund. We came into the year with a fund balance of $157,000, and we're going to spend that down to just about $35,000. This may be a bit conservative, but we need to come back strong and we need to make sure that moving forward in the future that we can sustain this fund because it's been something that's been a bit of pride. I know prior to this year, and just with the inconsistencies due to COVID, it really, really took a hit. So any questions about the Community Services Fund? Keep moving. Food Service Fund, we talked about this throughout the year. As, again, this is one of those funds that the state will not allow us to have an excess fund balance. Holly and I met frequently, talked about the things. You remember the equipment purchases that we made throughout this year to get better, better services and better meals for our staff and our students. Our revenues increased. Again, this is a lot of federal dollars. Every meal is free for every student, and that's going to continue into next year as well, they've announced. So breakfast and lunch, it's free for all. And you can see that expenses increased as well, and that was primarily due to the planned purchases that we made. We are going to finish the year underneath the allowable threshold. I made sure to check into that. We will have a fund balance of $424,000 is what I'm projecting in the Food Service Fund. And so Holly and I will continue to work and look at the serving line, new cafeteria tables, those type of things. But for now, we're good, we're healthy, and we're under the allowable threshold in food service. The Student Activity Fund, this is just the fund with all the fundraising accounts. This was something prior to last year. We did not need to look at. We did not need to approve. GASB 84 came through, and it requires the board to adopt this budget, just like all the rest. So this is really our first full year of budgeting it. The revenues and expenses are very close and, you know, appropriate for a district of our size. You can see we started the year with a fund balance of $226,000, and we're projecting to end the year with a fund balance of $229,000. And again, this is, this is all those things like Class of 2021 account, Class of 2022 account, all the fundraised accounts. Debt Funds, these are all of our debt retirements. So the revenue comes from the seven mil tax collection that all property owners in Cedar Springs Public Schools pay. And our expenses are based on what we owe, based on the retirement schedule of our existing debt. We pay in November and May. So you can see the list here. We do have two new ones, the Fund 34 and 35 are new 2021 bonds for the refunding and then the school building and site bonds. Those won't be part of this. So a little bit about that, for 2021, we needed 6 million, just over 6 million dollars to pay off our interest and our principal. We bring in a revenue of about 4.6 million. So that's why we borrowed about 1.4 from the school bond loan fund in April to pay off our debt. So I'll breeze through these. Really, the revenues pretty much match the expenses because we borrow from the school bond loan fund what we need to make our principal and interest payments. This year, we had principal payments for the 2012, 2016 B and the 2018 refunding accounts. Everyone else, we just had retirement, and I'm not going to speak much more on these. So I'll keep spinning the block here for these funds. For the new one, this is the Debt Fund 34, this is the 2021 refunding. You see there's $3 million in revenues there and $3 million in expenses. That's because we receive the revenue and we send it right to the school bond loan fund because we repaid that debt at the lower interest rate. And that was the topic of a presentation from last month's board meeting. So you can see we end with zero there, and that's it for debt funds. Moving through. Capital Project Funds, we've only had one up to this point. It was the Sinking Fund. But starting with this school year, we have to adopt a new one, and that's our 2021 School Building and Site Bond Fund. So we're making that Fund 43. This is the Sinking Fund. Each year, this brings in about $650,000. This year, we brought in $654,000, excuse me, $548. We will end up spending 217 of that. So you can see our estimated fund balance on June 30th will be about 1.375 million in the Sinking Fund. I put what those expenditures were there to the right. And it's worth noting that summer of 2021 currently will be the last year that we collect on the Sinking Fund because it expires in December of 2021. So it is a, it is a, it is ending unless we were to go for an extension on it. And then 2021 Bond Construction Fund. This is brand new. Obviously, there was no original budget. It's all zeros. Our revenue is what we just received, and that was $32.4 million in our bond proceeds from the bonds we sold on May 11th. And then our expenditures, 1.8 million. That's based on all of the progress billing. And now the work that you're seeing done right now at the middle school and Cedar Trails that gets built out before June 30th. Insignificant in the big scheme of the 32 million, but it's the start. So that is the last budget that we will need to adopt for 2020, 2021. So as typical, we'll need to take action to adopt these resolutions at our next board meeting. If there are any changes, I'll provide them swiftly and concisely at that meeting. Any questions about the final 21 budgets?
No, very thorough.
It's a lot. I try to be thorough, but also try to be as quick as possible. So. And to add to the excitement, we get to go into the initial budgets for next year as soon as everyone is ready.
Shannon is with us. She's saving bandwidth and keeping her camera off.
Okay, with the board's permission, I'd like to go into the initial budgets for 2122.
Grant. Permission granted.
Thank you. Okay, so I, this is a little bit of, a little bit of housekeeping. We have to show this notice. Again, this is a budget hearing, and we are levying 17.8168 mils of ad valorem taxes on non-homestead properties and non-qualified ag property in the district. So if your primary residence is in the district, you are not paying that property tax that is just on second homes and commercial properties. But it is, again, something that we do need to post. It was posted in the Cedar Springs Post and outside the district offices and on the website. So that is the millage rate proposed for this budget. So getting back to the same theme, first, first part of the budget is to look at the revenues. And I showed here, and I won't go into any detail. Typically, you know, I have a big spreadsheet that kind of projects the enrollment. We look at what the trends have been. We look at where our students are. It's more challenging this year than it ever has been in my experience just because we're not sure who's coming back. It's more challenging this year than it ever has been in my experience, just because we're not sure who's coming back and who isn't. And where everyone is. So looking at. The actual enrollment from this previous year, we came with a projection of three thousand four hundred and forty six students and it really kind of works through to. Split the difference between the twenty nineteen, twenty and the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school years in half. And that's where we're hoping we come in at. I think it's a conservative estimate. I think as, as COVID winds down. And restrictions are peeled back, very hopeful that the, that students will be back in our buildings. Eager and willing to learn as will our teachers after a summer where they can hopefully catch a breather. So. The declining enrollment, it's worth noting, there was the, the super blend this year to help districts with declining enrollment. It helped every district in Kent County with the exception of one. It certainly helped us. The governor has put it in her budget proposal for twenty one, twenty two. The House and the Senate have said not, not, not something we're interested in, but it's not dead yet. So it's something that we still don't know on. We also don't know where the, where the, the school aid fund budget will be for next year, but just worth noting. So.
Hey, Chris?
Yes.
Are you intending to show your screen?
Oh, is it not on there?
It is not.
Goodness. Thanks, Matt.
No problem.
So there it is. I don't think we missed anything. This was the notice of a budget hearing. Can you see that now?
No.
Thank you for telling me that.
Yep.
Okay, so there's the budget here and I won't, I won't read through it again. This is the, this is just my screen showing the worksheet, you know, briefly with the enrollment estimate. We're coming in at three thousand four hundred and forty six. And this was just a little language about the government's proposal saying she's still in favor of a blended enrollment for declining districts. I, I did put a little bit of. A few slides in here from the Consensus Revenue Estimating Conference, which I found to be extremely, these slides to be informative. At the very least, and shine some light on where it really looks like there's a lot to look forward to in terms of not only the school aid fund, but. The, the general fund for the state of Michigan. Retail sales and food service. You look at this, th- these are all slides that were prepared by the Research Seminar in Quantitative Economics from the University of Michigan. Very, very smart economists there. Although I don't like the colors, it's definitely worth sharing. So. You can see where retail sales and food services took the dip from COVID, but they are just going sky high. And if you're out and about, you see that. I'm not gonna go through any of these slides with any great detail, but they all have a similar theme. And that's growth. So Institute and Supply Management, Management Indices, there's strong growth there. We know that right now supply can't keep up with demand and a lot of. You know, factors of the economy. So you see that growth coming back from COVID. Inflation, I think it is alarming. These economists said it's not alarming yet, but you can see the yellow line. That's the inflation line really trending up. So it'll be interesting to see where CPI ends up. For next year, that's Consumer Price Index, but prices and wages are trending up. And here you see their projection for the Consumer Price Inflation twenty twenty one. We're still at two point four. The three point one seven is all items. That's considering really the items that are in short supply, but they're projecting it to come back down, which is good. Especially when looking at our bond construction, because right now, when districts are going out to bid for big projects, they're coming in way, way over budget. I won't read through this with monetary policy. The, the, the really, the take home right here is that they're still projecting that there won't be a rate hike until twenty twenty three. They really want to let the markets get back and comfortable and recover from COVID before we see any type of rate hike and get employment down. So monetary policy not really changing. This is good news and bad news. The market interest rates. You can see the conventional mortgage they're projecting is going to steadily rise throughout the next couple of years. So if you personally are looking at getting a mortgage. Now is a great time. It doesn't look like it's going to be lower. But you see at the bottom, the three month treasury bill, still gonna stay very low, which means very low interest earnings for us. But it does make me hopeful that by the time we sell our bonds again in twenty twenty three, we'll still see a lot of savings and a good bond sale similar to this year. And I just threw some of these on here because they do pertain to the district from a standpoint, but they're also kind of a personal interest. Single family home price appreciation. This is projection and where we've been. You can see that we're at the top of this very, very significant peak at this time. That impacts the district because as home prices raise, so does local prop- property tax revenue. But it obviously has other impacts as well. So this tells us, you know, if you're looking to buy. Maybe now is not the best time. If you're looking to sell and you have a place to go, hey. It's, they're projecting it's going to come back down, at least the economics, economists at the University of Michigan. So a little bit there and I won't, I won't go into that anymore. This is a very important slide. So this is the School Aid Fund Revenue Consensus Revenue Estimating Conference, and it really goes back five conferences. So. You go back to January twenty twenty, that was the last one pre, whoops, that was the last one pre COVID. So we'll focus on this, this row right here, twenty twenty one. So in twenty twenty, January pre COVID. And this is in millions of dollars. Okay, the projection was fourteen thousand three hundred and seventeen. In the School Aid Fund, which is really fourteen. Excuse me, fourteen million, or I'm sorry, fourteen billion three hundred and seventeen. Okay. In the latest Consensus Revenue Estimating Conference, that was north of fifteen. Okay, so that means. That twenty twenty, twenty twenty one will finish with seven hundred and fourteen, almost seven hundred and fifteen million dollars more in revenue. Than that was projected pre COVID. Which is significant, especially when you consider where we were a year ago with, with the sky is falling. So really significant. And just this last January of twenty twenty one, it looks like the School Aid Fund is gonna have more than a billion dollars more in revenue. So that's why, when you see the governor's proposal for the School Aid Fund, this is why, because I've never seen anything like this. In terms of revenues coming in to the fund. Anyways, it's very robust. It's very, it, it looks, it's a great projection for years to come as well. So the other part of my proposal for the budget, the revenue, you had the, the number of pupils, three thousand four hundred and sixty six. I based this budget on a three hundred dollars per pupil increase, which would bring us up to eight thousand four hundred and eleven dollars per student. That's the largest I've ever proposed for an increase in per pupil. But if you look at the Governor's Foundation Allowance Increase Proposal, which is down here on the left, she's proposing a five hundred and eighty one dollar per pupil increase. Still haven't heard from the Senate and House on that. So it's roughly half of that. More to come, but that's what we base the budget on. The revenue projection. Unfortunately, I still project revenues are gonna fall primarily because we're gonna, we're gonna have less students in the district. At least it looks like right now, and I think that's conservative. But we will see some changes. So property tax revenue is gonna be up. That's going to pull local revenue up, but. On a whole, it's gonna be down by about a quarter of a million, and that's really a, a reduction because of our, our roof. Catastrophe at the high school gym this past year, added a half million dollars in local revenue. I mean, it was offsetted by. Expense, but we're not gonna see that in next year. So that's the change there. State revenue, we'll see a decrease in foundation allowance. But we're going to get more Esser funds come through there and offset that. So that's why that's about the same. And then federal revenue. Eight hundred and forty one thousand dollars less in COVID related funds is what I have on here, and that's a little misleading because it just means we haven't appropriated it yet. It's going to be there. I'm sure the federal revenue will end up being probably the same as this year or more, but it's just not appropriated in this budget. So please be aware of that. And then transfers and other, there's really no change there as far as our revenue. Now I'm just gonna, I'm gonna move through the expense budget as quickly as I can here. So you see a big change in basic programs. On a whole, our final budget here on the left, our initial budget for twenty one, twenty two on the right, it's an increase of one point three million dollars. Okay, so projecting that our expenses are going to grow by quite a bit. Obviously, one big consideration is the CSEA contract, and this is just a real small snapshot of the cost associated with it. There is guaran- there are guaranteed steps here and there are costs that are going to be associated with them. So I put those costs in there and you'll see them as we move through this budget presentation. Basic programs. So this is the teachers in the classrooms, increase in the budget of six hundred and eighty four thousand dollars. There's an increase in certified, certified staff wages that you'll see. There's an increase in retirement FICA and workers comp that have to come into play with that. There's also the typical increases in insurance costs due to the Public Act one fifty two hard caps. And some SR two funding that we approved for CKLA, the, the, the Language Arts Curriculum. That really added about six hundred thousand dollars to the budget in its own right. But again, it's offset by COVID nineteen expenses from this previous year. So you don't really see that in the bottom line. And then something that I think is very exciting, we are gonna allocate about, we are gonna allocate a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for classroom furniture needs. So something Scott and I spoke about, I've spoken with Ken about as part of our ongoing. Flight plan related to, related to our operations budget, and that's getting a steady stream for furniture. At Cedar Trails, Cedar View and the high school, so that our classrooms are more uniform and more inviting for students to learn. Added needs, we'll see a decrease there, about a hundred and fifty two thousand. A lot of one time Esser expenses went here that we don't see coming into next year's budget. People support. We will have some increase in staff wages and benefits. But the health aides, we don't anticipate coming back next year because we're hoping COVID nineteen is a thing of the past. So. About a hundred thousand dollar decrease overall in pupil support. Instructional staff services. We are going to hire some, some staff members to really move forward the district and really recover some of that learning loss. It'll be, they will be paid with Esser funds with these COVID relief type dollars. That's two learning champions, one math and one English Language Arts. And then one educational technology, full-time staff person that will be helping. But I do see a reduction in educational tech hardware expenses for next year, so that offsets as well. Overall, an increase of two hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars in instructional staff services for next year. I'm not gonna go through each of these in aggregate. General admin, school admin and business services, these are all up slightly and they're really to just increase. Due to salary and wage increases in steps for administrators. There are some movements to full family insurance for a few folks. We did reallocate FTE for our accounts payable, was split over three different funds. We're gonna bring it in and it's really just gonna be split over human resources and the business office. And then really dues, fees and workshops. I'm anticipating them coming back to pre COVID levels. A lot of people have not been going to those for the last year, so you see an increase on there. We're almost through the expenses. Operations and maintenance, I mentioned it already, the half million dollar roof repair at the high school was a one time expense. That falls off, so it makes it look like our operations budget is really gonna decrease. But it doesn't overall because we're gonna return a lot of that to pre pandemic levels and I anticipate seeing more work done there. Transportation was a very large increase. I spoke about how there was a half million decrease this year. In our, in our contract with Dean Transportation, we have a built in two point seven five percent increase last, next year is the last year. Of that contract, but that's built in and again, anticipating getting back to pre pandemic levels. So that's factored in. And then again, KISD, Special Education Transportation. Going back to normal, which is about eight hundred to eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually. And then really not much change on central and support staff services, and that's HR, technology, communication and pupil accounting. Not much change there. And lastly, athletics, getting everyone back up. A lot of the supplies and, and uniform needs that we had unspent from last year, we're gonna catch up and get everyone what they need. So a slight increase of about ninety one thousand dollars in athletics. Now typically, at this point, we talk about staffing changes in, in our budget presentation. I decided to put it all onto one slide rather than do it building by building. So we did have some retirements from the past year that will realize in next year's budget. We had some temporary placements for twenty twenty one, some one time teachers. We had some substitutes fill in for our mid-year retirements and resignations. That are no longer budgeted in, but then we also have new positions for twenty twenty one. And those new positions, I, I spoke about the math champion, literacy champion and educational technology. We'll be adding three FTE at the high school. And you see a first grade teacher, a second grade teacher, a fourth grade teacher and a replacement band director that I believe we just. Made offer to today. So a few staffing changes, those are all built into the budget as well. But again, nothing too significant. And a lot of the temporary placements. We already knew about, they replaced other folks and some of them were offset with COVID relief type dollars. Any questions about the staffing changes for myself or Matt Blood? I can pull Matt back into this too.
For new positions, like for example, the band director position, that was in the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one budget. It's not a new position. It's a new person in an old position. So we're not adding that many positions. Across the, across the district.
Yep, and it's worth noting too, Scott, I appreciate, and that the, the high school teachers, you know, two of those high school teachers are replacements for, for teachers that have gone to other. Other parts of the district. For example, the, the educational technology person is a former high school teacher. So they're not all straight ads. I spoke about the COVID relief type dollars and said there's a lot of money coming in for years to come. We really have through twenty twenty four to spend these dollars. And you can see it's north of five and a half million dollars for COVID relief funding. So there are specific things that we can spend these dollars on. Mostly, we plan to spend them on. Academics and getting, getting students caught back up and getting them what they need through social emotional support, through instruct- instructional support, excuse me, through educational technology. We currently have allocated about one point three million dollars of this five point six million in this budget. But there's summer school funds in here as well. So a lot more to come related to COVID funding. Over the next several years. Here's our pie charts you can still see, and I mentioned before, I like to stay under seventy five percent on salary and benefits. Those are our fixed costs if we can. And I didn't label this. On the left is our final twenty twenty one budget. On the right is our initial or original twenty twenty two budget. You can see salaries and benefits have crept up a little bit, but they're still around seventy two percent. So we're still very much in a healthy. Healthy location with those. And then overall general fund budget. So as a percentage of expenses, we would finish the twenty twenty one school year with a twenty five point six six percent fund balance. If we come in here, our fund balance would be just shy of nine point five million at twenty two point six two, still extremely. Robust and one of the highest in the county, but it shows that we are doing some of those things like. Putting money towards furniture and additional staffing to get our students back to where they need to be. And that's it for the general fund. I did not have a question slide here, but I'll pause if anyone has any specific questions related to the general fund. Before we move through the next ones quickly.
So I don't have a question. Well, I just wanna confirm. So for the Board of Education, there's been a statement made about our compensation. And it's really a stipend. It started out that it was gonna be thirty dollars a meeting, but we, everyone had wanted to keep it under. Six hundred dollars a year. So each Board of Education member receives five hundred and ninety nine dollars a year.
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that and put that on the record because that's, you know, even though. We are elected officials, we're not officially on the payroll, we get paid that amount of stipend. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Yep, it's a five hundred and ninety nine dollars stipend once per year, so that it doesn't, you know, beam that amount. It doesn't even require a ten ninety nine form per IRS guidelines. And I will say from the districts that I have served, it's certainly one of the lowest. So I don't know what the perception is, but. If you consider all of the work that the board does, it's a very small price. I'll leave it at that.
It was, this was a good time to clarify that during the session. Thank you.
Absolutely. I can provide a percent of the overall forty one million dollar budget if anyone would like. But I'll need a calculator, because there's a lot of zeros before any good number. So Community Services Budget, I'm gonna run through these really briefly. Stop me if you have any questions. Again, Campus Kids and Tuition Preschool. I am projecting, we're gonna get back to normal and at least no longer really. Cut into this budget. I've spoke with the leaders of the Community Services Funds. And we're really looking to get back to pre pandemic levels in Campus Kids and the services they provide. So. I think this is a conservative budget. I have us really breaking even, but maintaining about a thirty thousand dollar fund balance at the end of the year. Something we will certainly monitor and hope that, that, that it exceeds where I have set the budget for community services. For the Food Service Budget, this is something we're really gonna have to watch. I mentioned before. Meals have already been announced that all breakfast and all lunch. meals have already been announced that all breakfast and all lunch are completely free again for all students next year. And so that really drives the revenue, especially if we have more students back in the buildings next year. So right now, looking at the raw numbers and the expenses, again, we can't just raise wages for employees because they're part of a, of a contract, and we've got to follow the contract wage schedule as written. But as I have it, as I projected in this budget, we would have an estimated fund balance on June 30th, 2022 of $688,000. That would be in excess of the allowable threshold, you can see on the right side of my screen, by about $177,000. So we're really going to have to watch this. A new serving line at the high school, which we could really use to complement our bond construction, carries a price tag of about $130,000. So there's some really neat things we can do with that and some other things we're looking at to enhance services for families from the way of a mobile app, and we'll go into that another time. But we're going to use those dollars in a, in a, in a great way. Student activity bond to get funds, excuse me, this is again, the, the fundraising dollars. I'm really projecting this to be about flat. Revenues typically match expenses, so you can see that here. We will finish this year with $229,000 in that fund. Projecting next year, it'll be about $234,000. Nothing really worth of note in the student activity fund, just need to adopt it. Debt funds, I mentioned before, that is a lot of funds. We're adding two more. So in, in total, we will have eight debt retirement funds for next year. It's worth noting that next year will be the last year we need to borrow from the school bond loan fund. I project we will bring in a revenue of about $4.8 million from tax collections. We need $7.1 million next year for our principal and interest payments. So you can see where there's the difference. We'll have to borrow about $2.2 million from the school bond loan fund. But after next year, we will retire our 2016B debt, and therefore, from then on, our property tax collections in the debt fund from the seven mills will exceed our expenditures, so we will no longer need to borrow. So it's just worth noting there. I'll run through these briefly. Please look at these if you're interested, and if you have any questions, please reach out. But for the sake of time and everyone's sanity this evening, I won't run through each, each fund specifically. And 34, Fund 35 is the new fund. We will have debt payments on the new construction funds next year. So you can see that's brand new for 2021, 22. And then finally, the capital projects funds, the sinking fund. Again, this is the last year we'll collect on that, and Fund 43 will have a lot of action next year. First, the sinking fund, currently our last summer to collect, and we plan to use this in conjunction with 21 bonds. Ken and I plan to get together and work through this and really come up with a plan. If this is the last time we collect, we'll have roughly $2 million left in the sinking fund, and we want to make sure that those are used in a way that is extremely meaningful. And then finally, the 21 construction fund will really hit full gear. You can see most of our revenue is in the current year, but most of our, about half of our, about $19 million in expenses will be in next year because we plan to spend this $32 million between 21, 22 and 22, 23 before we sell the next series of bonds in 2023, right at the tail end. So expenses include the middle school lots, Cedar Trails, high school renovation in addition, Red Hawk renovation, Cedar View renovation, and then of course, all of the GMB architect fees and Triangle Construction Management fees that are part of the budget. So that is everything I have for the initial 21, 22 budgets. There will be a few changes. I've already started to write them down on notepads, but I will just give them in a bulleted list for next board meeting, and then I will have the budget resolutions all ready to go for your review in Board Book by probably Wednesday of this week. If anybody would like to see the resolutions for the general fund, they are already posted on the Budget Transparency page of the website. So we're reading for you there, and I am all set. Unless anybody has any questions.
Any questions or comments?
Can you remind us once more about the bonds? Just how much did we save?
So there's a couple of different ways of looking at it, Matt. I mean, if you look at the original, the original treasury application with the pre-COVID interest rates, we saved about $18 million, which means we're going to pay the debt off, you know, for, four years, five years before what was projected, and we were already going to pay it off, you know, well ahead of when the mandatory repayment date was set to be. So yeah, that was a really, really, really great showing. I hope we could do that again with Series Two in 2023. I did, Amy McCarthy, our community, communication specialist, did post that on the website. If you go to the the bond update part of the website, I wrote up a little, a little narrative about it there, and you can read about all of our bond savings. So I think it's coming out in the newsletter soon as well. So I appreciated your, your recommendation from the last board meeting. Hopefully, everyone will be able to see that and, and recognize the savings we, we experienced. So.
Any other questions from the board? Comments? Okay, I just want to say I appreciate the conservative approach, Chris. And also to let the public know, all of these funds do undergo a full audit every year by CPA firm. So while we're approving the budget, there is other oversight to be sure things get put in the right categories, which that's a whole other report.
It sure is. Look for that, look for that one in September.
There you go. All right, thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, we'll move on to discussion item B, the L4029 property tax forms, and Chris will be presenting.
Okay, so this is very brief because I brought this presentation to you at the May 24th board meeting, knowing that I would be talking this much during this meeting. So I will not go back through the calculation. The L4029 is just a tax rate request form we have to send to each taxing municipal unit before June 30th, so that they can get it onto their, their July 1st tax bills. So this is just really a compliance-type piece. It lays out the property tax rate that I mentioned at the beginning of the initial budget, and that is rolled back to looks like I grabbed the wrong one for this, but it is in Board Book. It is rolled back to 17.8168 mils for a non-homestead property tax this year. So as presented last board meeting, there's no changes there to our L429, and I'll answer any questions anybody has.
Pretty straightforward. I think we're good. All right.
You betcha.
Thank you. And discussion item C, the Independent Bank Construction Funds Account with Chris.
Okay, so this account paperwork was uploaded in Board Book. This is really our last piece. We received the funds. We have them invested, and we'll draw them down per our draw schedule provided by Triangle Construction. But we need to set up a bank account with our, with Independent Bank just so that we can cut checks for all of the different pieces of our bond work out of it. So one thing that IB requires is the board minutes that show that the board has adopted the creation of an account. So really no changes during our organization meeting in the beginning of January. You know, we approve Independent Bank as our, as our bank. This is just an additional account that we need to create there because we must keep, of course, the construction funds, the bond funds, separate from all the other general fund, food service funds, you know, debt funds. So that's all this is. Yep.
So this might be preliminary, but on the draws, like, do two people sign them, or do, is it just paid out according to schedule? Or what, will we hear more about the oversight later about that?
No, I can go into that. That's a great question. So Triangle Construction oversees all the subcontractors. They, they submit those as pay applications. They're first reviewed by GMB, who is our architect and engineering firm, as does if we get invoices from GMB, they're reviewed by, by Triangle. And then before we pay them here, they're reviewed by myself, and then they're reported to the board. They're also signed off by, by Natalie, who's our accountant. So there's a pretty extensive review. We make sure that they, they follow through, you know, a pretty strict protocol. I've heard some horror stories of districts getting bond invoices, and someone just runs it through and processes it. And so we'll, we'll make sure that we avoid that because that, once that money's out the door, you can't get it back, obviously.
Okay, good. Thank you. And that is on for action tonight. All right, moving to discussion item D, the Cedar Springs Public Schools Extended Learning Plan Report with Jen and Chris.
Okay, I don't think I have Jen here. This is our, this is our last one. So you all are used to seeing this document. This is the, the document we've had to bring to the board. I have sunlight on my face. This is a document we've brought to the board each month all school year. It starts with September, and it really just shows our attendance rate. I'm trying to scroll all the way down to May. Yep, here's May. You can see all of our attendance rates for each building, both online and traditional, and then in aggregate, all students. We finished strong. We met the 75% requirement by light years. We were always about 90, well, 85 to 95, some cases higher percentages. So attendance was never an issue all year. And then I believe Jen did put the comments from May in here, no changes on the return to learn plan. So you can read that on your screen. But I have no other comments. Scott, I don't know if Jen left any comment for you on this. You're muted, Scott.
Thank you, Chris. No other comments, other than we hope that this is the last extended learning plan that we will ever have to
Agreed.
participate in.
Yes, and I, I will be glad to not have to go into Power School and run all these attendant reports and calculate the percentages. That's nice to be done with it.
Any questions from the board? Comments? Or any observations?
This will be posted to the transparency page of the website as well.
Perfect, thank you.
So, quick question, this, where did this, this come from? Just curious.
So it came out of the early work. It's that accountability piece. So when we get, when we get dollars from or additional dollars that come through or that flow through from either the state or the federal government, then there's always an accountability component to that to make sure that those dollars are being used wisely and invested appropriately into, into student programming. And so this was just a piece of that check and balance system that came with all of those flow-through dollars from the federal government and from the state of Michigan.
Yep, Matt, and on top of that, it's, I believe it's Public Act 45 requires the district to, to report attendance. And so in a, in a, in a typical year, we have to have 75% attendance in order to meet the requirement and, and receive funding for each school day. Because of COVID-19, the state passed this temporary relief that the district just needed to report its attendance through this and have it approved by the board on a monthly basis, and meet 75% attendance in each building weekly. And so that's what this was really tracking in aggregate, as long as we were above 75% for the month and for the weeks, then we didn't have any issues with, with getting all of our funding. So that's, this was just, as Scott said, that compliance piece that went along with that legislation.
Sure. Just one of the many, right?
Yeah.
Throughout this entire year. So we do appreciate you guys tracking all of that. I know it's a lot of extra work. So thank you very much for, for the, for the hard work, really.
Absolutely. Yep, it's been many, many hands make light work. It's one of the great things about being part of a, a strong team because we've all had hands in it and kept each other held accountable on it. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, all right, we'll move on to discussion item E and the superintendent evaluation, which we do annually, according with the rules that also the state puts forth. And in the spirit of transparency, we stay in open session. So Scott's going to share with us from there.
Yeah, so thank you, Heidi. So there are two attachments in Board Book. One is just the overall tool that we use to provide guidance and feedback on my performance over the year. It's the tool that's brought to us from MASB, and we use it as it is presented without any modifications. And so that's a document that is something that you would all be familiar with, and that you've gone through training on as far as your MS, MASB credits. The other attachment is a self-assessment that I've done to give you an indication of some of the things and some of the places within the rubric where my performance would align. Again, it's very similar to the resources and tools that you've had in the past. And so really, tonight is just a first look at the tools to make sure that there aren't any questions. And then the next step in the process would be for the board to provide me with some feedback at our next meeting, and then determine an effectiveness rating for the 2020, 2021 school year.
So I would say we, we appreciate your candor. And we'll review this. And is there any interest from the board in receiving the list of artifacts like we did before?
I would say yes. I think it's always helpful just to have that as backup and additional support for the great job that you're doing so far. So, yeah.
I agree. I think more information is always better.
And we, and we know that Scott's calendar is deep, so that's not, that's not a hard thing for him to do. And, you know, we know that this year's been just challenging with the COVID, plus the bond work. And as we've stated with, with Chris, we hope the COVID, the COVID work is falling off as we walk all of that back, and that things might be a little more normal. So we, we acknowledge your, all, all the hard work that you've done, Scott.
Perfect. Thank you.
Is there any other comments for this time? Next meeting would be more, typically more conversational, as this is a first look. Okay, all right. Thank you for that. And that brings us to our last discussion item, which is the community use of district facilities for pickleball courts.
So I've been working with Sue Wolf and other members of the Cedar Springs Community Building Development Team, as well as the city of Cedar Springs. They're actively looking for places for community members to just enjoy life and to be able to get out there and be active and be engaged in the community. One of the activities that they're looking to advance in Cedar Springs is the development of a space where community members can play pickleball. And a location that we have, I've actually been having conversation with the city manager for Cedar Springs since really, you know, July of 2018, when I first arrived on campus, the possibility of transforming the courts on the north end of the property on 17 Mile into some space for pickleball. The courts, as they currently sit, are go unused. The fence is getting rustier and rustier by the year. You know, the courts are in tough shape, and they're not necessarily playable at any higher level of performance or expectation. But the Cedar Springs Community Building Development Team is interested in investing some of their dollars into upgrading those courts. But they also want to make a wise use of that investment. They don't want to invest dollars into that space, and then for the district to turn around in five years and realize, oh, wow, we needed that space for an extra driveway, or we needed that space for some other, some other purpose. And so what they're, you know, what Sue is, is asking about is, you know, is there some type of agreement that the district could reach to provide a 10-year window at minimum of, of time where we would not do anything else with that space if the Cedar Springs Community Building Development do anything else with that space if the Cedar Springs Community Building Development Team was to invest dollars in, in making those spaces more, more updated and, and a higher level of quality for the people who were, were using the courts. So there are some pros and cons. You know, if we make a commitment, then we've made a commitment and it would prevent us from, from doing other things on that space if new opportunities came our way. But obviously the pro would be, you know, it would give our community a space to enjoy the outdoors and to get engaged and be active. There is no, you know, there would be no governing body over that space. You know, the city is not necessarily interested in maintaining that type of relationship or that type of degree of governance over the space. And really, you know, pickleball is not part of our curricular program. So it's really not something that the district would do either. It would be more of just a, you know, an open, an open facility for community members to use. There was some talk of the North Kent Community Enrichment Group providing some degree of organization around pickleball teams and pickleball tournaments and pickleball leagues and that type of thing. But that is yet to be determined. Really, right now, we're trying to get a sense, they're trying to get a sense of, you know, let's, let's identify a place to play first. And they're just looking for some guidance, you know, would the board be open to, you know, making some type of commitment where, you know, they would at least have a, a 10-year window if they invest the $25,000. So really, right now, it's just, we don't have a hard presentation or a hard proposal for you. We just want to get the lay of the land to see if there's interest in us continuing with the conversation.
Scott, I had a question about that. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Shannon.
Oh, my question that is next to Hilltop, and I know we were having issues with the, the brick facade. Is that space far enough away from the building that that would not cause a problem? Or is that something that's also being looked at?
So that's a great question. I think it would be out of the fall zone. So in the event that the, the brick does fall on the, on the east-facing side of the building, I don't think that there would be any danger to people who are, you know, playing on those courts. It is far enough away from the building that, you know, in case there was some type of failure structurally, that, that it would not impact the courts. But that's a great question.
That, yeah. Nice question, Shannon. That was one of mine. Another question I have is as far, you're, you're saying the city's not kind of taking responsibility for that section of land. We would still retain the property rights, I would assume.
Correct.
And would we also be responsible or liable for any accidents on that court? For the general public?
Yeah, I'll let Chris jump in on this with his awareness of SET-SAG and our insurance coverage, but.
Yeah. So that's a great question, Matt. It really would be treated just like, you know, any other district property, like our, our tennis courts or our basketball hoops where, you know, we're indemnified from any accidents such as that because they are, you know, we're a government entity. And, you know, they'd be playing it, playing on it on their own, you know, resolve. So we'd be covered there. There's, there's no concern of extra liability. Unless there was something of gross negligence, which, so we would have to obviously monitor it, but in no way differently than we do any other district grounds.
I, I think it's a great idea. How long has that court been sitting there and not having anything done with it? So putting the money into it and, and getting some use out of it, especially right there at that intersection, it seems like it could be something good.
There would probably be less gross negligence if, if we fixed it up than there might be now. Just saying, people walking across. I don't know anything about pickleball, but it sounds like fun to me, you know, for a lot of people. So I would, I would support going forward. I don't think the district wants to be in the management business of anything pickleball. So, you know, if another entity did that, that seems to make sense to me. But as Matt said, how long has it sat there? So.
As far as parking, has that been talked about, considered?
So there, there is some parking on the north end of the property. But, you know, pickleballers would have to use their resourcefulness and, you know, they could park down on the drive to, by Red Hawk or you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be adding parking to the, to the space.
Okay.
So they would have to use the parking that was available to them.
Accessibility-wise, do we have to take that into consideration? I know it's an existing tennis court that we're, you know, updating and, and I just wonder about any civil responsibility that we will have to get a sidewalk up there or any ramps, because I know it's kind of on a hill.
Yeah.
So just a thought on that.
Excellent question. Thank you.
Does anybody have any objections if Scott were to go forward with this? All right.
Okay, perfect.
All right.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
A sleep pickleball conversation.
Okay. All right. That brings us to the portion of our meeting where we would entertain public comments. And at this time, is there anyone that would like to address the board? We do have the timer set at three minutes and we would look forward to hearing from anybody that has any comments on anything on our agenda or would like to address the board this time.
So I've had two individuals reach out. Mr. Dwayne Gritter has requested time with the board and then also Mr. John Nix has also requested time. So we'll start with Mr. Gritter and then we'll go from there. So I will turn, I will permit Dwayne's microphone to be used. Dwayne, our microphone?
Okay, I think I'm there.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, I can't hear you. Hang on a second. It's out. Uh, let me try something different here. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great, 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 great. Okay, so, uh, Cedar Springs, last meeting, May 24, 2021. I spoke to the Zoom meetings. I wasn't very happy with the comments that Ms. Heidi had made, I'm sorry, which someone there had made in reference to the ease and the comfort and the convenience of having Zoom meetings. You may remember that. So I don't believe that they're conducive to good relations with your attendees. Tonight, I'm going to speak to the legalities of using this method and the tactics that you guys are using to silence the public. I'm at Rockford. I find it interesting that both of you have chosen this week to have your comment section from the public at the very end of your meetings. But just find that interesting. Matter of fact, at Rockford, we've gone through several of their minutes and found that they have not done this in many, many, many months, if not before. So you guys could use this tactic, but we're not going to go away. Anyway, using the method that you guys have, I'd like to indicate to the board that the illegal use of this medium that you have been using, the Zoom meetings, and exercising to ask that you immediately begin abiding by the law. I'm going to refer you to the law. Once again, I believe I may have done this previously. Referring to Act 267, 196 of the, actually, the 1976 Open Meetings Act, 15.263, paragraph four, it is not required for a person, first of all, to identify himself at a meeting to attend that meeting or be part of that meeting. Of course, if someone wants to expect an answer from the board, they're going to have to give them their information one way or another, whether it be email or whatever. So now regarding to the electronic portion of a Zoom meeting, which was what we're doing versus regular public meetings, it's mentioned in the act specifically referencing electronic meetings. It says specifically, "All electronic meetings must be conducted," quote, "to be must be conducted in a manner that allows two-way communication," unquote. The pair, I will paraphrase the rest of that. During the public comment period, all participants, public body and public participants must be able to hear members of each other body. Now, I can't hear anybody in the background, but I know that there's several other people on board with me. Between the board members and the public, I'm supposed to be able to hear them and they're supposed to be able to respond while I'm speaking to you, and I don't hear that. So obviously someone is violating the act in this case. In other words, all microphones must be on during the public portion of this meeting. If you guys don't want to follow that, that's entirely up to you, but you face whatever may come from that. Also, you're probably one of the only schools that I know of that's had a Zoom meeting all the way into June, where I've been attending other public meetings since April, excuse me, March. Also, 15.263, a person is not required, once again, to identify themselves even on an electronic meeting. The superintendent has my contact information for anybody wishing to speak with me regarding this. I'm going to recommend you guys kind of recognize your constituents, those that pay taxes and pay your wages. We had a pretty ruckus meeting down here at Rockford. We're going to have more of them, and I'm sure that we're going to have more with you guys. You got to start listening to the people. We're trying to educate you on these laws. I know you're trying to say that you follow your legal advice. But guess what? Those lawyers don't care if we go to law, lawsuit, excuse me, to a suit. They're going to make more money going to court using my money to fight. So I'm just asking you guys to wake up, recognize what you're doing. We see what's going on. Next year, two or three of you will be gone. I will do my best to make sure that happens. You guys got to meet the public face-to-face, eye-to-eye, not up on a platform, not up on a stage. Meet them at their level, speak to them like, you know, human beings.
Your three minutes is up. Thank you. I let you go a little over.
Okay, the next, the next person requesting an opportunity to speak is April Patton. So I will open up her mic.
Hi, April. You're muted. There you go.
Hi, Heidi.
Hi.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you.
Hi, guys. Great. Thank you for letting me know. Um, hey, Heidi, thank you so much for that letter that you sent. I read it. Fantastic. That really made me smile. Thank you very much for sending that to the health department. Um, the only thing I really wanted to touch base on today was the social studies curriculum. Is that still available for review? I, I know I should have touched base on it when it was mentioned a couple times prior, but I was so busy thinking about all the other things that I wanted to talk about. I totally overlooked the social studies curriculum. Also, I work until five at night, all the way out on Cascade. So is there a way that, if I can still review the curriculum, like, is there like a link that we can put on the site or maybe send in a newsletter? Not just for me to look at, but maybe other parents as well. Just like, if there's a link that gives us an overview of what's in the social studies curriculum, like, I would really appreciate that. I'm sure other parents would as well. I can't imagine any teacher or anybody working at the school would want to come meet me at six o'clock at night so I can view it. And if it's too late to view that, can we, can we at least get the link just to take a peek at it anyhow? If it's already been approved, I understand if it has and I'm too late, but I, I still would like to take a look at it if that's okay. And I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Smith will follow up with you. So thank you.
Thank you, April. And the next person is listed as Jeremy Bott.
Hi, this is Jeremy. Um, I'm just curious why you guys are not here. Why somebody's on a boat, it looks like. I work a whole lot of hours. I'm able to make it here. Don't understand why you guys aren't here to actually answer our questions. This is quite ridiculous. There's a bunch of us here. Don't understand why you guys aren't here. Pretty, pretty sad. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Jeremy. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? That we see any, anybody's hand?
So I'm guessing this is John Nix. The Hilltop Cedar
Yes, this is John.
Hi, John.
Do you guys hear me okay?
Yep, we can.
So as we dive deeper into trying to help the board out, I've known I've attacked you guys and I came at you pretty hard. But my child is all I really care about and so the next journey is curriculum. And I know Trent has reached out to us multiple times and going through the social studies, this new curriculum is, we're overwhelmed. And I misspoke. I'd like to put that on record, saying $500 a month, which is five, 600 a year. Thank you for that. That's a lot to go above and beyond. However, you have a community here that's starting to wake up and want to get involved. And we would like to propose a place or a time that we could get together offline and actually review this curriculum. Critical race theory is something very huge here in the United States. It's becoming more and more obvious. And we'd really like to work with you guys. We'd really like to communicate with schools and that's task, I guess, the next task for me and some other people have asked the same. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And Scott will follow up on that.
Thank you, Mr. Nix.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like, that hasn't already spoken that would like to address the board?
I have an individual listed as Julie, and so I will open up her mic.
Okay.
Hi, this is Julie Kaiser. I just wanted to say thank you for everything that you guys are doing and we are here to support you and work with you. I am also disappointed that you're not here with us. Zoom can be done anywhere. So you could have done the meeting from here, but we want to know how we can work with you and work with our students as parents, as the administration here and come together so that we can do what's best for the community and best for the children. So whatever we can do to help you, let us know so that we can support you and you can support us and we can take care of these kids together.
Okay, thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Julie.
Okay.
So I don't know if someone else has Jeremy Bott's phone. So I'll open that mic to see if it's a new person.
Okay.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, my name is Angel Bott.
Okay. Hi, Angel. We can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, I just want to know specifically if the, what your goal and plan is with the critical race theory curriculum. I would like to see us work together, I think, between all of you guys and all of our minds. I really think we could really make some really good progress. But I think it's going to take a little more than, you know, what's being given at the current moment. I also, I'm still a little interested as to that budget, what's going on with Views Playground. The other thing is, is there, what buildings have air conditioning and which ones are the, the, the summer camp? That's happening in the Beach Elementary. Am I correct? Or is it going to the other buildings? Like, as far as the elementary students?
So we wouldn't answer that for you now, but when Mr. Smith follows up on you, that would be part of the response then.
Okay, because again, I'm going to revert back to the mask. Okay. And then, um, and then I'm also curious about a foyer request on the budget. If that's something that we can look into. It just seems like there's an awful lot of money and I really think, I don't know, another second set of eyes on it, just to be on the safe side of things, just especially with the past history that Cedar Springs has endured with money issues. I think that's definitely a warranted request. And like I said, it's just a lot of money that's going around. And we, we all know that the schools need lots of updating. There's lots and lots of things that And like I said, it's just a lot of money that's going around and we, we all know that the schools need lots of updating, like, there's lots and lots of things that need to be going on. Yeah, so that's all I got. I hope you guys have a great rest of the week and I look forward to a follow-up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Angel. So the Hilltop Community Center hand is raised again, so I'll open up that mic in case someone else is using that device. Is there someone with the Hilltop Community Center device? No.
Okay. Okay, I think we've, I think we got everybody. I don't see anybody. Nope, all the hands are down. All right, thank you. And, um, we've got notes and Scott will be following up on that, so we'll proceed with our meeting and also our email addresses are on the website if there's any other, um, notations that wanted to be given to the board. So we'll move on to our first action item, which is the L forty-two-nine property tax resolutions. And I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide? Uh, trustee Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed, yes. Motion carries with a vote of six-zero. The second action item for tonight is independent bank construction funds account, and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, I'll call the role Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide?
Yes.
Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed, yes. Motion carries with a vote of six-zero. Thank you. And that brings us to our communication, uh, portion of the meeting. And, um, for the Board of Education, I would like to thank you for um, hanging in there and all the knowledge base and the different experiences that you're bringing to the board. And we know that you are, everyone is out talking with other people and different parts of the community. We not only hear from public comment. Uh, so I would just give a shout out to the board because I know you're active and out there. So that's the first piece of that communication. And Scott, did you have anything that you wanted to communicate back to us? About any prior conversations or any updates for us that we would need to know as the board?
Yeah, so I think, you know, one big area of question is in regard to, you know, many people have, are continuing to wonder about the mask requirement. And there's been some confusion and some postings on Facebook that the Kent County Health Department has lifted the mask requirement, um, in making ma, face masks a recommendation. Are the, the masking orders that we're following, the, the orders that we're following for meeting attendance and that type of thing, those are all still orders that were, were required to follow uh, based on the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services uh, mask in gatherings order that was issued on June first. That order expires at eleven fifty-nine PM on, uh, July one. So it is my hope that after that, there, there will be no more orders. We can meet as many people as we want. We don't have to wear face masks. Um, there still will be recommendations in place. The Health Department will still be recommending that uh, individuals use face masks if they're not fully vaccinated, but again, they're just recommendations. They would not be requirements. And so I think that's the biggest question. We're still obligated to follow those Michigan Department of Health and Human Services orders. And so those are still in place, uh, for, you know, a little over two weeks. Um, the first, uh, couple of sessions of summer school, uh, those students will have to wear face coverings if they're not fully vaccinated, if they're not eating or drinking, or if they're not, if they don't have a medical exemption when they're gathered indoors. Um, our teachers are being very strategic in the planning that's going on. We're going to have our kids outside as much as we can. Uh, for the next couple of weeks, we know that it's hot as, um, you know, as we're having summer school at both Red Hawk and at Beach. Um, you know, we were strategic in terms of when we scheduled those, uh, those sessions. So the sessions are scheduled in the morning. Students will arrive on campus around eight-thirty. Um, they'll engage in some learning activities, both indoors and outdoors, uh, weather permitting, and then they'll have lunch and then they'll be, uh, they'll be, uh, sent home at, at twelve-thirty. Um, you know, and so we're trying to be strategic to get them out of the heat as much as possible because the reality is that those buildings are going to be hot. Uh, it's summer in Michigan and, uh, and so we know that. But again, after those mandates are, are lifted and I'm not hearing anything in the pipeline that there's going to be any, um, any, uh, extension of those Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, uh, emergency orders, I, I think we're going to be all set. Uh, but unfortunately, we have to wait till July one to, uh, to make that happen. So that was really the big piece.
And Scott, remind me, does that also cover Zoom meetings and the Open Meetings Act? Or is, was that a different?
No, I appreciate that question. So the reason why, um, we're permitted to meet in Zoom is that Kent County has an emergency order declared through June thirty of twenty twenty-one. And so, uh, part of the Open Meetings Act, uh, if, if there's a declaration of an emergency uh, within a county, then, uh, governing boards are permitted to have their meetings remote, uh, hybrid or in-person. The tricky thing about having in-person meetings is managing the logistics because we still have to follow those Michigan Department of Health and Human Services orders. You know, and so tonight, for the bulk of the time that we were together, and we had over twenty-six people in attendance, if all of those individuals had come in person, we would not have been able to meet in the boardroom. Uh, and so just those logistics, uh, were tricky and, um, this Zoom option, uh, because the, uh, Kent County has that emergency order in place through June thirty, is fully permissible within the, within the Open Meetings Act.
And the plan moving forward after June is to meet in person, correct?
Uh, that would be the plan. Again, I don't anticipate any extension of that emergency action by Kent County. And so by law, we would be required and by choice, we would want to meet in person. You know, we won't have any gathering, uh, requirements or restrictions. Um, you know, people can sit on each other's laps if they want, uh, in attendance, uh, at, at a board meeting. And so, um, you know, we, it will be back to, you know, pre-March of, of twenty twenty, uh, as far as operations go.
And the piece two, you mentioned about, um, masks and vaccinations. Um, there is no vaccination requirement and there's no waiver needed for any vaccination because it isn't required. So I think that was another, you know, piece to share with the board when we're talking to people.
Yeah. No, good point. Thank you. Um, yeah, the vaccination, um, is, is strictly voluntary uh, across the board. Some families are choosing to become vaccinated, others, others are not. And, um, and so because there's no requirement, then there's no waiver, uh, to, to avoid the requirement.
Right, right.
Yeah. So strictly voluntary.
Right. Um, another piece to share with the board, um, there had been a question of our oath of office and our acceptance of office. And there was a glitch with what was on file at the county. Scott, if I, if I would say that right, so if people had called the county to check, um, and Scott has, has brought the county up to date and all of those items are completed and they were given to the elections clerk.
Correct. We had email correspondence, uh, dated appropriately showing that all of the documentation has been submitted in a, within the timelines that are required by law. And, um, we also had copies of all of the original documents, uh, that we were able to share with uh, the Kent County Clerk's Office. And so now their records are up to speed. Um, so in case anyone does inquire about, uh, the acceptance of office of any of our board members or, uh, the oath of office, um, any of our board members, the district keeps the oath of office documentation. The county keeps the acceptance of offer, office documentation. Uh, and so those records are all up to date, both in our files, uh, and in the Kent County Clerk's files.
And, and another piece to share, um, with the board, uh, there, there was an off the cuff remark of claims of bullying or corruption, um, in our district. So if anyone hears of any of those allegations or things, please encourage, um, any those reports to be filed because we don't have any knowledge of that until someone were, were to file a report. So that would be another awareness to the board. And giving you public notice that there is nothing on record right now.
Correct.
Okay.
So if you hear things from parents or community members, please, uh, have those individuals share with the principals or, you know, you could reach off on their, reach out on their behalf, you know, get the information to, uh, staff members on campus and we will uh, investigate and take action appropriately.
Certainly. So the other piece is, um, you know, just again, to thank the board for their, your dedication and Tracy is out of town. Uh, we do see a lake in the background. She is out of town for work, so Zoom has been helpful that we can, uh, keep connected as a board. And Jeff was actually on an airplane that wouldn't have worked too well for Zoom or any other kind of, uh, zooming in. So, so that's that piece. So that's bringing you up to speed for the board communication. And if Scott, do you, if you have anything else for us?
The only other thing is we're meeting, the, we're meeting on June twenty-one instead of June twenty-eight. And so, uh, if you could make a note of that in your calendar and we'll get that posted. We've got it posted on the website. Um, so the public will know and, uh, and we'll go from there.
Okay. So, next meeting is June twenty-first. And having no other business before the board tonight, we will stand adjourned at eight fifty-four. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
I looked for the gavel. It's not here.
Thank you so much.
Just bang the microphone, Heidi.
Yeah, there you go.
See you, guys. Thanks.
Bye-bye.